Okay, so let's open the July 21st meeting of July 21st, 2020, meeting of the Bristol Planning Commission. I don't have an agenda, so, but I looked at it. We're going to, first, does anyone have any additions to the agenda or any changes? Okay, great. And was everybody, I was not able, did anybody have any comments on the minutes? I think the minutes need to be adjusted and I actually didn't get to that, so I'd like to put that off. If anyone else has any feelings about that, let me know. Because it got a little confusing and loud at the end and I didn't, unless, Bill, were you, did you make any changes to the minutes? No, you're muted because I asked you to be muted, I know that.
I sent them out to everybody.
Right, right. I think we just needed to add that, the piece about Adam's memo that wasn't on there, so I still need to do that. So why don't we wait and approve them next time if people are okay with that? Okay. All right, so I did, last time I just, I had trouble hearing and just in terms of, and I think the internet service was bad last time for some reason, it seemed like other people were having trouble. But, so I need to be more careful about muting myself and we just need to be more careful about that. So, especially when we're making important motions, so that's basically it, we need to know what we're saying. So we can write it down correctly and get it recorded correctly. Okay, so I wanted just to touch base again on the Unified Development regs. We have, they, that document has been sent out to all the adjoining towns and I'm finding out, I don't know if the Select Board has it yet, but I'm gonna, I'd like to get it to them before our, our public hearing on that. And then, then we have, let's see, so I already have scheduled and I think I sent it out to everybody, the notice for our public hearing on the 4th. So that will be the next meeting and then, and then in real touch base on this, after that, I will need to, or will need to then get a notice in the paper right away so that we can have the Select Board hearing one month after that. On the 20, that would be the 24th. No, that's not a month, that's two weeks, so. Approximately two weeks, it has to be worn for 15 days, so it's a little more than two weeks. Okay.
So let, let me just clarify, so August 4th is the public meeting and then when is the, with the next one is what?
So August 4th is the Planning Commission Public Hearing on the Unified Development Regs. And then we need to warn the Select Board Public Hearing and my hope is that we can do that on the 24th of August. So it needs to get warned so that we, it's in the paper for 15 days before that, so I think.
The Select Board, that's the 24th.
Of August.
And this will be.
Yeah, that, that's not definite yet, we have to, our, our public hearing has to go smoothly and we need to be able to move it forward. So that would be, the soonest we could do it, we have to get a notice in the paper by the 6th. So basically I have to have it ready to go, the notice on the 3rd, which is before our public hearing, but then we just, if for some reason we're not gonna do it, we'll just, they won't publish it.
So on the 24th, this is for ratification or not ratification of the Uniform Development Regs?
Well, the Select Board then, we'd have a public hearing and then after that, the Select Board has to adopt it. And then it needs to go so that it will get on the ballot in November. Not, yeah, November.
Okay.
That's the latest it can be approved to get on the ballot. Okay?
Yep.
Okay, great. So I'm gonna hand it over to Andrew now and forever. No, just for the rest of the night. So, and unfortunately we didn't get Lloyd back.
Yeah, hopefully he will come back around. So, I am gonna do a share screen just so we can be looking at the same calendar, which is mostly what Katie just said. So let me see if I can switch over to that. Can you guys?
Well, that, are you gonna switch to the plan calendar? Because I was trying to, okay.
So, see, can you, can you guys see the, the Word document here? Timeline?
Yep.
I'll zoom in so it's a little easier. So this is basically how the UDR and plan approvals fit together. So we're, be sort of bouncing back and forth a little bit. So basically this meeting, we want to knock out the last couple of sections of the plan. Then on the 4th, we have the public hearing for the development, Unified Development Regulations. If there's any time, I will be at that one and we can discuss the other last, last edits to the plan, but I'm, I'm not gonna count on that. So that basically leaves us with the 18th for basically our final wrap-up meeting. And unfortunately due to timing constraints and budget constraints, these are basically the last meetings we have to work on the plan in order to get it into, have it warned and then have our public hearing on, I guess there's a, the 22nd, is that right Katie? September 22nd is our public hearing? Oh, you're muted.
I'm trying to be good. Yes, that would be our first Planning Commission, or, we only do one, that would be our Planning Commission Public Hearing.
Right.
And with plan, there's 30-day, there's a 30-day period instead of 15, so it's a longer.
Right.
This takes longer to get through everything and the Select Board has two hearings.
Right, so if we on the 18th, send it on to the Select Board, they would have a public hearing on September 22nd and then October 26th. Is that right? Yeah. All right, our public hearing is the 22nd, then the Select Board is the October 26th and November 23rd. So you can see how having those 30-day increments pushes things out. And then we would have it wrapped up and ready to go for approval, I believe at town meeting day in the spring, which would give folks a chance to look at it and have it done by the new year. Assuming that we make it to the new year. At this point, I'm giving about a 50-50 shot. So, basically, that means we need to wrap things up this time and then before your 8-4 meeting, we're gonna have the documents with basically all of, all of the things we've worked on and highlight the goals and policies, just because those are the key parts and that those are all in order. And the implementation steps will be the last things that we do at our, at our final meeting. And we'll, we'll get those sent out a week beforehand so everyone can look at it. If they're, I heard a.
Yeah, this is Lloyd. I lost it on the, I got it on the phone.
We're glad to have you back.
Great, sorry about that Lloyd.
Yeah.
Lloyd, we're, we're just talking through timelines and making sure we're all on the same page. I'm gonna unshare, so, oh, I can hear you, I see you have a phone symbol. This meeting and then what if we need to touch base on the 4th after the public hearing on the zoning development, development regulations and then wrap up the plan on August 18th?
Good.
Okay?
I have, I have some serious concerns about that schedule. If we look at the meatball chart we did a few weeks ago, we haven't done anything appreciably on the plan since then. There's still an awful lot of incomplete work and to the best of my knowledge, there's no central repository so we can even, or at least I can even have a sense of where we're at with the revisions in the previous discussions. Say nothing about pulling this thing together and basically one meeting so that we can come to consensus on it.
Well, we can, we can post all that, I can post all that this week so everyone has it and all the changes that we've made. And get the, just to give a few weeks of extra time.
Yeah.
But at, at some point, basically, we're gonna have to hand off a draft. The regional planning is gonna hand off the draft to you and if you want to make additional changes, then it'd be something that's in the Planning Commission's court. But we can only basically spend through the end of the year on it. So maybe we should move ahead to looking at some of the sections that we sent out this time and some of the comments. I think we talked about starting with housing and moving into the flood resilience, since we've seen both of those before. And then economic development.
Andrew, could you, can you send out that plan, the dates? Can you email that to me so I can get my notes right?
Sure, do you, do you want me to do that right now or do you want?
No, after the, after session.
Okay.
Thank you.
I believe, I believe I sent, you should have it somewhere, but you can get it again.
Yeah, I'll resend.
I, I'm pretty sure I sent that to everyone, or maybe I didn't. I did, okay.
Okay. So, if, Katie, do you want me to pull up the housing section on Screen Share and we go through it?
Sure, yeah, I don't have it.
Okay. Oh, let's see if I can manage this at the same time. Okay, so the population housing section is one at the beginning. The draft that folks should have is the 7.7 version. And we updated some of the things, we talked about like the modeling, which is still pretty rough, but hopefully less confusing at this point. And I think main things we wanted to just double check were the goals and policies. And I think, I can pull up some of Kevin's comments.
Andrew?
Yep.
Before the goals and policies, there's a section that Kevin made some comments and we should discuss.
Okay. Was it the housing needs and concerns or further?
Right here, yeah. Are his, are his comments on here?
Uh, they're not, but I think I can. Can you see, can you see that?
Right.
So.
I guess we should just, just talk about your, your comments, Kevin, and how other people feel about it. You know, it's kind of, I guess, a matter of opinion really, or I don't, I don't know, so maybe we could get a little bit more about, you know, you could tell us a little bit more about your comment. I mean, I, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here, I'm trying to see the screen here, so I think, I think we dwell too heavily on accessory dwelling units as the silver bullet, if you will. And there was a discussion that Bill Sayer was very involved with a few meetings ago about changing the dynamics of the village by allowing additional multifamily, however that happens, with an ADU or duplex or whatever. So I think, that's why I raised, I highlighted that, so I think, I think there's some discussion there that is unsettled. And I think, you know, maybe that sentence is okay here, but I think we've got a, a a big discussion ahead of us as how we deal with it and affect that.
Can I, I would like to make one comment about that, or, I mean, I feel very strongly about that. I've been, I've spent a lot of time in the last year and a half now working on this issue, working at the state level and local levels as well, in Bristol just being one piece of that. And there is, and it's not necessarily, well, in this case, I'm not just referring to accessory dwelling units, but that's, it's not necessarily the silver bullet, but it's, it's almost like one smaller, easier step people can take because we really have this demographic change. And many communities are trying, trying a lot of different things and they're finding that this is something that helps by providing smaller, it helps on, on both ends, by providing a smaller unit that someone can rent, live in, and it also helps people who own a larger home in that they, maybe they can generate a little more income and stay in their larger home. That's just one little piece, it's not necessarily the solution to everything, but there, there clearly is a problem throughout the state and, and it is town after town after town. So I'm not just, this is not just a Bristol issue. So that, that's, that's what I'll say, I, I feel very strongly about that, so that's why I'm trying to, that I have tried to get that in here. But I want to hear everyone's opinion on that.
So Katie, your idea is that we're having accessory, accessory uni, dwelling units increases the possibility for more housing, is that correct? That's your idea?
It's not my idea, it's something that's been in the books, been in plans, people have been working towards it for a long time. If you, you know, look at any of the literature, any of the writing about housing across the state, this is what people are talking about.
I'm not questioning that, I'm just, your idea behind it is that by putting that in, it gives the idea that we're trying to increase the amount of housing available.
Appropriate housing.
Okay.
Not necessarily the amount, I mean, but yes, it would, but there's, basically we have smaller family groups. That is a known thing, and so people need to live in smaller places and housing is very expensive, a single-family home, standalone single-family home is very expensive for a couple starting out or an older couple. Yes, so that is, that's my point.
Well, I agree with it, I agree with your point.
Can I say something on this? You know, I, I see this all the time, because you know, I have an apartment above my garage, which I don't rent out, because I keep it for family and friends. And just this week, and it happens frequently, people I've never even met ring my doorbell or send me an email saying, and it's usually a young couple or a, or a single parent with a child or two children. Can I rent your apartment? Would you like to rent your apartment? So there's obviously a, people who want to live in the village can't afford a large house and want something, something that's affordable. And this would be, I didn't even know if it's permitted, right, I didn't build it. So I have no idea what its status is, but I'm not renting it. But I, I see this all the time, that's an anecdote, anecdote is not evidence, but I think, I think it's illustrative of what's going on because the population and economic dynamics of Bristol are changing and the housing has to change to meet it somehow. And I, I understand Bill's concern for maintaining the character of Bristol, but Bristol is, the population is changing already. And you can either accommodate to that or you can fight it.
So is there a way we can tweak that sentence? Basically leave the tools in place, but I mean, for me, the "are needed" kind of begs the question of needed for what?
I'm not necessarily advocating change in sentence, I'm, I'm just highlighting that because the last time we talked about this thing, there was some varied, very varied discussions and as we walk towards implementing zoning regulations, we need to be cognizant of the different points of view. And, and I, and I do, I do, and then I, like I said, I don't wanna, you know, we end up using PRDs as the solution for everything and I don't think we want to necessarily go down that path with accessory dwelling units.
This sentence doesn't just say accessory dwelling units, it's.
I think that's why, that's why I'm okay with the way it is.
Okay.
And just to, Bill and I have talked actually a lot over the years regarding this topic. He, when the cohousing was getting going, this was an issue and we had a lot of conversation about specifically if you do have, you know, you have a owner-occupied accessory dwelling unit, so it's, there's many degrees of how apartments can be managed and, and how it all works out. This is a, we're, this is really a concept, this is not, this is not a regulation. This is opening the door for new possibilities and I think we need to, to do that. So, and I, Bill does agree, but I, I do, I know what you're saying, Kevin, and I am, I'm not trying, and Bill still will have an opportunity to give me his opinion, but we have talked about it.
I think we can move on.
Okay.
Okay, so for now, we'll keep that in place. If folks want to come back to it, we can. The next comment I have is about, in the too-expensive, this clause about incomplete kitchen, leaky roofs, improper wiring, et cetera. I think those are just examples that probably we can get rid of if, I mean, they're sort of examples of substandard issues, but I think we can take that out of the sentence. And then Katie, I don't know if you had any comments about having oversight and enforcement of health and safety codes during the permit process? And that is a remedy for substandard living situations?
It's a requirement anyways, I mean, it's a requirement. A permit, apartment would have to be, get a, you know, it would, a new apartment would have to get a permit, it would have to meet certain codes. So I don't know, really know if we are getting additional oversight if you're creating a new apartment. I know there are concerns with additional, I mean, existing, excuse me, concerns with existing apartments that are substandard and they sort of fly below the radar and that's a tricky, that's one of those difficult. It's hard to find a solution for that without becoming very heavy-handed. So I'm not suggesting that, I'm just suggesting that we need to stay on top of this and be aware of what, I don't think it's really, I think it's a reminder.
Well, I, I think it's a, a mixed-up paragraph. Thirty-eight percent of Bristol residents are spending 30% or more of their income on suitable housing. Not all households can afford that, period. Then we go into the extra costs that may in fact be an owner or it may be a renter, so it's mixed.
Right, well, we can take that off, that's fine. But that is, it, it was just, I guess that really is me just saying, that's what happens. People end up living in a substandard place and, and how do we avoid that? So we're not gonna solve that in that paragraph, so that's fine.
So, yeah, and I agree with you that it's not the permitting process where things are substandard, it's a, it's a function over time. But this paragraph here to enforce, suggests, and we don't have a code enforcement function in Bristol now unless the town is ready to do that. I'm not sure why we would be, be pointing that out as a requirement or a solution.
Well, I think we could just take that whole bit out after not all households can afford, afford this type of rent or afford this level of rent and then take the rest of it out.
That's fine, you mean.
All right. Let me get back to suggestions here. All right, so I think comments on the main body, so if we can go through the goals and policies, we will be done. So we've, we went through this once before. But it looked like you had an issue with under goal number one, this policy number four, can you still see my screen? Supporting efforts to improve substandard rental housing to comply with state laws. And I think these are all, all of the basically support is advocating that if there are approaches that the town can do, like helping apply for grants or getting information to folks, that there's, that that is something that the town wants to do to basically improve the, the situation of some of these, so, and complying with state laws is certainly gonna be important.
Well, it goes back to the whole concept that the town needs to be prepared to set up a code office, code enforcement office based on that statement. And I, I'm not sure, I'm not sure where, you know, we can say that and we can say we're gonna support it. A lot of this stuff gets really fluffy when we're gonna support this and, and encourage that, it's not like, and we just end up with this big, long list of goals that we never do anything with because all we're doing is encouraging. So I would think we would be looking at these goals and making them things that are doable. You know, in the world of lean manufacturing, you, you improve what you can control and leave the rest of it to whoever else can improve what they can control type thing and, and, you know, it doesn't do anybody any favors to have like a whole bunch of lines of fluff and there's nothing that's concrete or there's nothing that's palatable that's gonna be done with it.
Well, that's implementation, that's the task, that's the, you know, the action slash task implementation that we're gonna have at the end. It's, you know, it's the format, it's the format of the plan.
So how much of, so how much of the implementation on the last plan got done?
Well, quite a bit actually. I can't rattle it off the top of my head, but.
Yeah, I think.
But I think that we could improve.
Yeah, and I think, I mean, it is pretty lean, I think we have, I mean, especially in the housing section, maybe one or two actual actions. It's, it's a lot shorter than the goals and policies for sure.
The point is though, do we believe in that? I guess that's really the question now, do we believe that's a good thing? If we, you know, if that's something that you think we should try to implement or we should implement and make Bristol a better place. or we should implement and make Bristol a better place to be for everyone, a better community, then, then it's a good policy. And then we need to then craft an implementation task that takes it to the next level. That's more concrete.
So I mean, one way is to look at this goal one, item four as aspirational, but I also see Kevin's point. Aspirational, great, but what, what actually happens here to implement the goals that we are setting out? Are they all aspirational or in fact, is there some teeth here?
So.
Andrew, yeah, yeah, let's go over this. That's good.
So, so this, we, yeah, we kind of talked about this early on and then it's covered again in the implementation section. So the goals are meant to be sort of the long range where we want to in five or 10 years. And then the policies are supposed to express this intent or their position, especially in any sort of board of adjustment or Act 250 proceedings. Those serve as sort of the basis of what the town wants, but the actions themselves, I can show you because I was just looking at the implementation table. Over with the, like the implementation for housing was basically three things. A plan for housing needs for the elderly. And I don't, Kevin, I don't know if any of these have been done, but just as a demonstration that this is a lot slimmer than the actual policies. Reviewing setbacks in certain districts and exploring possible locations for additional high density housing and lodging. So those are basically the three things that were assigned to the planning commission. And someone with more knowledge of the planning commission is have to tell me whether those actually happened or whether they're going to be back on the docket for the next five years. So, so these policies are supposed to be intentional and not saying that the planning commission or the select board is going to do something in the short term. But if there is an issue, then it's something that can be referred to. Or if there's a proposal with funding for additional, you know, assistance to make sure that housing is complying with state laws. I think, I think whenever, whenever permits are issued or things that that should clearly be part of it to make sure that places aren't going to burn down and aren't a health hazard. But I mean, I think, I think it is intentionally somewhat vague as a, as a supporting statement that the town does support that in general.
Comment? But I have the same, some of the same reaction as Kevin to some of this stuff. There are a lot of encourages can talk about later, but this particular one, supporting efforts to improve substandard rental housing doesn't call for the establishment of a code office. It's really, if everyone agrees, substandard rental housing should be improved, seems sort of non-debatable. Then it's up to the planning, to the, I'm sorry, to the select board to decide if there's a specific action they want to take. They want to establish a code office? Well, maybe, maybe not. Maybe there's some other mechanism. Doesn't call for a specific mechanism and it seems like a perfectly reasonable idea to me. Is anyone in favor of substandard rental housing?
No.
So this one seems fine. There are some other ones I have some issues with, but this one seems fine to me.
Are there other folks that have an opinion on that one or want to talk about one in this section that we should discuss while we're here? I know it looks like Kevin was suggesting maybe, and maybe rewording this to include some of those other options that we talked about in the previous section would be good on number five. Basically, an X, including accessory dwelling units.
I think that we could do that.
Actually, my main. Like accessory dwelling units, duplexes and multifamily units as potential options.
I'm okay with that.
Folks okay with, with changing it basically to include those accessory dwelling units, duplexes and multifamily units as a part of revising zoning regulations? All right. If we keep moving along, the policies under goal number two are ensuring that Bristol's housing stock provides for all segments of the community. First policy about supporting incorporation of accessible design standards and new and rehabilitated housing. Facilitate access for people with disabilities and aging adults.
Well, once again, I think that is something that I believe in. We're not, this is not a mandate. This is something that I would think the town would support, especially since our population is aging. And so that's why I think it's important to be there.
I agree. Yeah, similar idea. It's a good idea. How it's going to be implemented is something for the select board to figure out, if at all.
This, this plan for the development of elder housing, I'm pretty sure has been carried over since the last plan. Is that, is that something that is on the radar for the planning commission or the select board to follow up on?
Not that I know of, but it should be. I know that people in town want that.
Okay.
I'm going to mute myself.
Please don't.
Unless there's music playing around, then do. And then I, it may be that combining these last two, since they're pretty, pretty similar would make sense. I mean, I think the rental assistance programs are generally at the state level or nonprofits providing grants. And the, the support is a general sort of lending support, not necessarily financial.
So I guess like on, on this one here, I understand the support business, but how does the town, how does the town or how do we reckon, we recommend to the town to do this? Is there some function that needs to come in and like when you get a, a zoning permit, you know, Chris Pearlie's got this whole file of pamphlets to hand people about all this stuff or, or how's it done now or how should it be done? And instead of just saying, um, support it, just again, it just is one of those things that gets brushed over and, oh yeah, that's fine, you know?
Are there, I mean, that's more of a, I guess, provide information than a support. Are there other folks who would want to rephrase those or have a problem with combining them into one policy?
All right. I'm unmuted again. So this is something that I look at as similar to say, the revolving loan fund that Bristol has for businesses that they support businesses in certain situations with a loan or some, you know, financially supporting local businesses. So it's a different time now and housing is a big issue. This idea has been used in a lot of different communities. I don't know exactly how it's done or who does it, but that would be an implementation. So I think it's a con, a concept or once again, something that I think is an idea that could be helpful for people. I think we could combine it because they're similar, but it's not, once again, a mandate or commitment. It's an idea.
Would, would something like explore be a better verb for that?
I'm okay with that.
Or is that too action oriented?
No more, no less, nor less than we have now.
True. So if we, if we said, explore rental assistance programs for lower income households and first time home buyers?
It's for home buyers. It's not rental assistance.
That's a good point.
That's why they're two different things.
Well, they both say rental assistance.
Oh, now they do. They didn't before, did they?
I believe so.
Well, the idea is rental assistance and I think it's for down payments because that becomes something that's unattainable for some people that, that might be able to make the mortgage payment, but can't come up with the down payment.
Okay. So just assistance programs. Do, do folks have other comments on these?
No, that seems to be okay.
John Moore is asking to make a comment. Can we hear him?
Oh, hi, John.
I don't know if it's appropriate, but I could speak to the, the, as a developer, I can speak to the, the, the usefulness of aspirational statements in the plan. So when somebody, thanks, I'll just make it really fast. When somebody like me or some, I'm a small time guy, but if somebody bigger, you know, had more money to invest or wanted to do a bigger project or something. If there are aspects to a proposed project, a hypothetical project that aren't clearly supported in the town, but a developer comes in and says, I want to do this. And I can point to the town plan where it says the town wants to go this direction. It wants this aspect or this characteristic built into things or it wants to, you know, take, you want to achieve a goal of some sort. Those aspirational statements do two things for somebody like me who want, who may be looking, who may be pushing the envelope a little bit. They, it, it allows them to go out and, and say to investors, look, the town wants to go this way. It's, it explicitly says, we like this and we want that, see that happen, even though the town isn't doing anything for it to happen. It also allows me as, when I put in my permit to the, to the, to the review board, whatever it's going to look like in the future, I can say, look, this isn't going on right now in this zone where I want to do this thing, but look at the plan. The plan is aspirational and says, we want to go there. And here I'm proposing something that meets that aspiration or takes a step in that direction. So I would urge you generally not to be too, too exclusive of aspirational statements. They do serve a purpose. And lastly, I would say, God forbid things come to a lawsuit. Let's say there's a dispute over a development proposal and there's one side that wants it and the other side that doesn't. If one side can say in a, in a legal dispute to the courts or the Act 250 board or whatever, hey, look at the town plan. Here's this aspiration that they want and, and the project that I want is going that way. Or the project I don't want is going the opposite way of that aspiration. That becomes very tangible and very real in those several circumstances. So aspirational statements, although they may not be actively pursued by the town at this moment, where they may not even have the force of law or anything like that, clearly state the town's desired direction and as such can be incredibly useful as things develop or as there are disputes or what have you. So, so I, I would urge you not to cut too many or, or whatever aspirational statements from this because they are helpful in real circumstances at times. Thanks for making time for me.
Yeah, that's good to know. Thank you for that.
Thank you, John. That was good. I appreciate it.
Are folks okay with exploring assistance programs in terms of assistance for lower income households and for first time home buyers and leaving those in? And are there any sort of aspirational policies to change? Oop, I heard a.
Yeah, sounds okay to me.
Okay. Let me pull Kevin's up again. So a couple of questions under goal number three. Kevin, do you still want to talk about some of the restoration and development of vacant or underused buildings?
I'm okay, I'm okay with the statement. I just, I guess I'm more concerned about how we implement that in zoning. And may, maybe it's not worth discussing here.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know if it is addressed other than trying to streamline the process for vacant buildings.
I'll just make a comment. It's in terms of zoning, it, it's more of a use. Being more flexible with uses, I think, allowing housing, say in an old mill building or, so it's that sort of thing that in some communities get caught up. They can't do that. So it's just opens up another possibility for housing. And I think actually in our zoning, but I think it's important to say it so that we don't lose that, you know? As times change, we look at, you know, we don't want to have vacant buildings that can't be used for housing if they can be used for housing because they, they're zoned incorrectly or they're zoned a certain way. And so that's what, what that is. I don't know if that answers your question, but. Or concern.
So it may, may not necessarily be zoning requirements, but more about the process of the flexibility and yeah, it sounds like there's already been some things that have been done. And obviously vacant buildings especially are it's nice to allow, allow folks to use it if it's, if it's a use that it works with the rest of the neighborhood.
And again, maybe, I'm probably, I'm probably ahead of the game or think, I'm not thinking, I'm not thinking that's more specific to this, but I'm thinking more, more along the lines of, of, you know, the, the discussion, the discussion needs to be had about zoning for stuff like this, you know? And I think I've got here in a comment somewhere, you can't build the Bristol, the Village of Bristol with today's zoning. And, and in order to be able to have things like this and have the flexibility that Katie was talking about, we need to really look at how we're zoned.
I don't know. I have to, I have to disagree with that because Katie brought up the point that taking an old building and putting it through, allowing for another use, to me that, that's fine. We don't have to change the zoning regulations. I don't, I don't agree with your point.
I think if you look at zoning, I think there might be some out if it's less, less, less use or less offensive use or whatever you want to call it, but you can't, you can't take a, a building But you can't. You can't take a a building in an industrial setting and make it into housing just because you know, you want to make it residential. So I think we need to be really careful about that and make sure we've got the flexibility in the zoning rigs when we look at them.
Well, it starts with the plan. So I agree with your saying, Kevin, completely. And but we're kind of, it's interesting right now because we've been working a little on zoning and now we're working back on the plan. And it's it's really the plan comes first and then zoning. And right now we're going through the plan, but we really do need to go back to zoning as soon as we get the most recent one updated.
I I agree with that. I'm just I'm just beating the drum that that stuff happens.
It does. And things and I there's there's a sort of exercise that I think everyone should be thinking about a lot is look at what we actually have. When you look and you measure setbacks of what we have with the existing town, the old part of the village and all these places that we really like. And then what we have used for zoning, and this actually is pretty consistent throughout the country, is a set of zoning regulations that were really designed for suburban developments. And they get they get overlaid on little villages and nothing works. And anyways, that's a big problem with the sort of the zoning regs and they're pretty generic. So I really do believe, and we had this conversation before, that when this is done, kind of the next project should be to look closer at uses and very specific dimensional specifications for zoning for the different areas. All right, I'm muting again. I'm talking to.
All right. For the next encourage zoning for the development of shared utility infrastructure. Kevin said, can you already do this per state regs and does it have to be zoning? I think if it's if it's already something that can be done and you want to continue, that's again, another aspirational sort of statement. So when, you know, if an act 250 permit comes up, they can point to it and say, we are creating shared infrastructure as sort of a qualifying point.
Maybe the term zoning shouldn't be in there or just encouraged shared utility infrastructure. Because it really doesn't relate to zoning.
So encourage shared utility infrastructure.
Right.
So we're for. Is that, do we need that second sentence or can we eliminate one of those two because they're pretty similar? We can.
Maybe get rid of the first one.
Okay. Since it's basically reiterating. Okay. So policy number four, consider the use of public assets such as buildings, land, infrastructure and financial investment to help reduce the cost of new housing projects. Think that's part of the consideration, Kevin, would be.
Well, my concern there is that's that's private use of public property. So I don't know. You know, if why the town is a public entity, it should be supporting a private development with town property or buildings.
Does anybody have a, I mean, I having that under consideration is basically leaving the door open for potentially selling.
Yeah, the idea would be that you would sell it. I don't think that they would. They wouldn't have.
I would agree with that, too. We should go back on the tax rules.
So is that is is the considering it the the hang up that or considering the use of public assets versus?
The the idea behind that was if there's building or property that is perhaps not being utilized to its full extent, that it might be rented or you, you know, contributed to a project. It's it's again, one of these, as John said, aspirational ideas. You know, if it's not being used to in it's an option.
Right. So we could put the the word underutilized in there before public assets. That would be helpful. Creation of a housing trust fund.
So.
Go ahead.
I I actually goes back to the it goes back to the concept that the town or government shouldn't be holding private property that can be privatized.
I mean, I think pre-government holds property that could be privatized. It's sort of holding it in common if it's serving a wider range of citizens is.
You usually it's sold. Traditionally, it's sold if it's if it has no use for the state, the town or whatever. It's usually sold is my my feeling or should be sold.
Right, so maybe go ahead.
I just don't think think number four should be in there, period. That's what I had in my notes anyway.
Anybody else have went away in or should we do a quick hand vote?
I have a little problem taking that out. Am I muted? No. Of course not.
I just think it's incredibly nebulous. You know, I just don't know what the hell it means.
I think there's a lot of things together in four. One is about using buildings, which is, you know, a an asset you could sell. Then it talks about using infrastructure. Infrastructure is not something you could sell, but I don't know exactly what it means. And then it talks about financial investment. So there there are all, there's a bunch of different things here and I'm I'm not sure what they all mean.
I'm with you, Jeffrey. I feel the same way.
It's a little confusing to me. The goal, of course, is reduce the cost of new housing projects. Of course, we already talked about that, about rental assistance. I mean, maybe maybe you could simplify it if you if you want anything. You could just say, consider ways to help reduce the cost of new housing projects.
I am thinking about where this came from. And and it goes back to a lot of the the work that I've done recently. And one of the projects that has been identified as a project that had this sort of public sort of a public private partnership is the Stony Hill project in Bristol, where, and I don't know all the specifics of it, but I know that it it and no one's really giving anything away to anybody, but there's a sharing of infrastructure. Going in on grants together to get it built. There's going to be a housing component there. The infrastructure is going to support that housing, water line, et cetera. So this is what I was trying to get at is that if it's possible for the town and and the community to benefit with a collaboration. And that's what I'm trying to get at.
So I would be okay with that one if we took out buildings and land.
That's fine. It's really the public private partnership and collaboration, you know, so because.
If we change, consider the use of public private partnerships to help reduce the cost of new housing projects. Is that take out some of the contradictory parts?
I I think that's a good idea, though, because I think that's what you're asking for really is public private partnership.
That's why I need you guys to, you know, set me straight.
Not a criticism.
I know.
I don't ever. I don't ever take things personal. What?
I tell my students editing your work is not a criticism. It's an attempt to improve it.
Okay, that reads better. Number four reads better.
Okay. So we'll take out the part about buildings and other infrastructure. So and then number five, creating a housing trust fund or exploring the creation of. Or take that out.
During COVID times, this is highly aspirational.
Well, my my comment in there is if you're going to create it, who's the the issue is ultimately who's going to create it is the town? And we're talking about things we if we're talking about things we can control. Is the town prepared to start a housing trust fund?
If it could get money from someplace else. Sure. Doesn't say where the money's coming from, but I agree, create sounds a little like if a town is going to set it up and fund it. Support. Encourage. Here I would say encourages or explore the possibility of a housing trust fund.
Does that sound okay to folks?
I like explore.
It's we're outside funding for a housing trust fund. We want, we don't have to go that far.
We're the Lewis and Clark of housing trust funds. Okay. Okay, we got one more. We can do this. So goal number four, promote innovation, sustainable planning, designing, construction of homes in order to achieve energy efficiency goals, reduction and help minimize environmental impacts. Policies, number one, encourage housing developers to locate projects in existing village centers on vacant infill lots close to jobs, public transportation and services.
Let's move on. I don't. I believe I already beat that one.
Okay. Work towards 2050 energy targets.
Got a whole section of.
I mean, that's the state. That's the state. Just leave it in. And no controversy there.
Uh, and then avoiding fragmentation of productive or ecologically important farm and forest lands. That ties into the forest fragmentation section. So basically planning new homes in areas in areas planned for growth.
Oh, that's going to be a heyday for the NIMBYs.
Can we? So I think in our, I can look at our forest fragmentation. I think we say reducing fragmentation instead of avoiding. I don't know if we mentioned farmland. But the the reducing forest fragmentation is an explicit goal that we have to address.
It's really just an encouragement to cluster growth, isn't it, rather than spread it out?
Land unit development, the whole business.
Yes, that's the thought.
Okay, so if we if we change that to is it okay as it is or do we want to make a change?
It sounds okay.
I disagree. I think, Andrew, if we have it written a different way in another section, we should be consistent and say, what was it? Reduce or something like that or minimize?
Yeah, I will. I will go back. I can. I think it's reduce. I will, but I will double check that and highlight it for folks if it's different. And then the last one, support projects that share community resources and responsibilities. So again, this could be support for new ones. Oh, Kevin.
Yeah, I'm not. Just move on. I was just a comment.
All right, so I think I think we are now that that brings us all the way through the goals and policies for the housing population section. Are there other? Folks okay with moving on? Okay, I'm gonna, I'll save it.
Yeah.
Okay, so. Can we do? Can we kind of? Can we do the same thing on flood resilience? Does that work if I keep doing the screen share? And Lloyd, I apologize. I know you can't see this. But if if you have a question, feel free to weigh in if you're still there.
Yeah, I was wondering if you sent me another email of the agenda, maybe I could get back in. I seem to have lost the one I had trying to find my way back.
I can do that. I'll send it. I'll email it to you now, Lloyd. I just sent. I just emailed one to Bill Sayer, actually, who is elsewhere. I'll do that.
You're good. But thank you.
All right, so Kevin had a couple. I I think this is just a a clarifying question. So these are not town owned buildings. These are buildings within the town. So I can make that change, Kevin. Thank you for catching that. That is poorly worded. So I mostly want to spend time on the goals and policies, but Kevin, I do want to address this. So the the river corridor is basically going above and beyond the the only there are basically flood hazard, a flood hazard overlay or area in the zoning. And then there's a a 50 foot setback on some rivers, but not all. So basically, if you adopted river corridors, then it would apply to all rivers. And including small streams would have an additional 50 foot setback. So one of the requirements for the flood, this flood resilience section is to address river corridors and have them on the maps. But since the town of Bristol has not adopted the river corridors, we wanted to make that clear.
So that's fine, but I are we in a position that we want to change setbacks on small streams and that sort of thing to 50 feet?
I think by having considered doing so, we're leaving the door open to that, but.
We even have to say we're going to consider it. Because if we if the select board chooses to do it, they don't have to have the plan. Tell them to consider it, do they?
Does anybody? Does anybody have a a strong preference either way?
Oh. May consider doing so. That gives the select board the option. So saying they will do it.
Okay. My master copy here. I think I'm zoomed in on the wrong version here. Change this one, so. Is that all right?
So I have a comment on the next page before you go down too far.
Yes.
The paragraph which starts over the last two decades.
Yes.
Right in the middle there. And then it says, in the middle, it says, the damage resulted in FEMA major disaster declaration ER 12228, which caused over $2 million in damages in Addison County alone. As written, that says that the declaration caused the damages.
I think FEMA actually did. I think FEMA actually did. Yeah, so that, the, the storm is named that, so that is, that was a good point, that FEMA's disaster declaration did not cause the damages.
Other damage, but it's in.
Probably caused some major headaches.
So if you say the damage resulted in a FEMA major blah, 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 would that work?
Or the storm caused $2 million in damages, there are the $2 million damages resulted in FEMA major disaster declaration, or
Yeah.
It's supposed to be rewritten, it's not a, it's not a major, it's not a substantive issue. I, I leave it to your discretion.
Well, for now, I will highlight that, but I will make sure that gets addressed, because it, you're right, that that doesn't make sense. And that may have been, I think, I think before, when you first talked about this, I had the reference to the DRS, which gets to run around a lot in emergency management things, and I think might have been Kevin or someone else pointed out that that was sprinkled throughout as a acronym that needed to be explained. Hey, Bill. So Bill, we are, we are going through the flood resilience section. I think headed towards the goals and policies.
Okay.
So thank you for joining us.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm late.
That's all right. We're glad you can make it. All right, so for goal number one, Bristol will protect identified and designated areas to reduce the risk of flood damage to infrastructure and improve, improved property. Kevin asked, are we doing this currently with zoning regulations? And I had pulled up at one point the Unified Development Regulations, the most recent version I have has a 50-foot setback from perennial streams on any new structures, enlargement of existing structures or extraction operations. So there are, there are fairly limited zoning restrictions already. Get back to where you made that comment. The, the second comment about developing uniform and simplified approach to defining zoning districts that interface with water resources and river corridors. I, I think that was something that Chris Purley had suggested early on. Basically redraw land use zoning. So that, so that instead of our, instead of the three districts, it would have an additional flood hazard district, which some towns have, instead of an overlay. I think we decided that might be something worth considering, but was outside the scope of our work in this. I think it's not a bad goal to make sure that they're uniform and simplified, but there may be ways to reword that if you have a suggestion.
So if I understand all that, we would end up with a flood hazard zone, if you will. And it would encompass anything that's flood restricted today. Now, that would that would be a weird looking zone, though, I would imagine, right?
Yeah, and the added complication FEMA is in the, in the process of updating those maps. Because what we have right now are 1985, pretty terrible maps that have been digitized, and it would basically be a a wavy corridor along the New Haven River. That kind of ebbs and flows. And those, those maps are supposed to be updated in the next, within the next five years, in theory.
So it'd be mostly, I mean, so I guess what I'm thinking about, it'd be mostly New Haven River, there wouldn't be necessarily any risk of spot zoning then?
Well, I mean, there yeah, so it's, I don't think it counts as spot zoning, just because it's something that's basically handed, this is the 100-year flood zone, and it, as an overlay, basically you hopefully are keeping the simplified districts underneath, but limiting I mean, a lot of it is for flood insurance, where, where in theory you're supposed to get flood insurance within those areas, so it's you know, in terms of limiting additional development there. I don't think it would change the zoning to a great extent.
Okay, thanks.
Do other, Bill, I don't know if you can see my screen, but I'm, I'm trying to share the screen so folks can quite literally be on the same page, so if you have things you want to chime in, or if I'm skipping over things, let me know.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
So again, this is the river corridor, there are basically zoning bylaws that this is put out that could be adopted. This consideration is basically to keep the door open for the select board to do that if it so chooses.
Well, as you can imagine, I'm very concerned about that portion of the New Haven. When it enters the flats.
Why, is there something going on there?
There is.
Oh.
To be a, a forest products company located neighborhood.
I think I've heard of them.
And the, the zone seems almost the whole property. And we've talked about this several times, many times over the years on this board. And our goal has been to find a good balance between giving the rivers some room to move around, on the one hand. Understand is what the gurus want is their ultimate goal. But on the other hand, oh, hamper and hinder the use of the property so that the the, the business can't grow. Because if a business isn't growing, it's declining. And there's a never-ending advance in technology structures and size. Both in equipment inside of a mill and the equipment to run a mill to supply it with the logs and handle the lumber. So what I'm really getting at is that we've tried to find this balance so that if the river does flood, there's plenty of opportunity for the water to move around the building, sometimes even through the buildings, so that it makes an inconsequential difference to anyone or anything that's downstream. And I hope we can find a way to continue that philosophy as we consider some of these different proposals alongside the river, one of which is this, this fairly new construct called River Corridor, River Corridor Protection Regulation.
So yeah, it's maybe, maybe that's in, in, again, so maybe I should take out the regulations part of that clause, or I don't know, do folks have feelings about whether that should be changed or removed completely?
Well, I, I don't mind having it in there, but I, I think what would be good would be to evaluate, maybe use the word evaluate, the effect of river corridor protection on on a existing existing homeowners and businesses.
Okay. How do folks feel about?
That sounds good.
Because it's, it's going to be out there, so I, we won't try to deny reality that's going to be considered. But I'm saying, I'm sure there's a way of writing those regulations or those guidelines would be better, I hope. Maybe we could put the word guidelines instead of regulation. And there's a way of writing them. Flexibility, so the business can survive. Over the mountain into Wade's Field, where Route 17 meets 100. You've seen a little sawmill to your right on the river, right there. The weeds are starting to grow up through it. At one point in time, that was a state-of-the-art sawmill. But it's not anymore, we don't, I hope don't want that to happen here in Bristol.
True.
Why did it happen in Wade's Field?
Constrained by, in that case more by and two highways. But it's the same general principle that when it was built, which was probably 100, maybe even 150 years ago, maybe even 200, you'll, you'll see, you'll notice it next time you go through. It was probably very convenient to be right at the junction of two roads. Made it easier for people to get logs to the mill and lumber to their customers. But if you can't adapt and adjust to changing circumstances, you stop growing and you die.
Oh, Andrew, just, I don't know if you realize it, but you made those changes to my document as opposed to your master.
Yeah, that's a good point. Thank you. I've got we've got the wrong one open here. But now I'm going to make it here and highlight it, so I move it over. Because I, I had an older version open. So I'm going to, I'm going to make your, the changes here, and then I'll make sure I get them. And then Kevin, you pointed out that I had historic structures, I think we can take out the historic and just say all all structures, is that all right?
That was, makes sense to me.
I don't think there's any reason to limit historic structures. Although given, given the housing stock, that may be a good proportion of them. So do, do folks have any other? Folks have other comments on goals and policies? We tried to do like we've been doing in the other sections and streamline them with goals, followed by policies, rather than just a big list. All right, then I think we're closing in and can move to the economic development section. And I'm going to do the same thing here where I pull Kevin's, because he's the one that sent me comments. And we can make sure we address those, there were a couple applying ones. Kevin, I think most of your stuff in the body of the text is right on and pretty easy changes we can make. So if it's all right, we'll jump to the goals and policies. So for goal number one, Bristol will attract and retain businesses that are consistent with the town's character to provide a balanced economic base while ensuring the economic stability of Bristol residents. That's subjective, so possibly rephrasing the town's character or defining if folks want to find a better way of describing what the character of Bristol is.
I think it's okay to be subjective, personally. I mean, if you agree, we're writing the plan. And I don't know, I, I had this discussion today with another planner, and plans are subjective. Somewhat.
So my concern is, there's, so there's maybe 300 people, you have 287 different opinions about what character is good and what character is bad. And I, seems like where our tent is, is to maintain the setting, if you will. Which is, is character, but I, I just, it seems to me like it could be a really subjective thing with and become a, just a my rat of different opinions about what exactly that term is.
How about compatible? Compatible with the town?
Compatible, sounds good.
Compatible with the town's character?
Not character, just compatible with the town.
Compatible with the town's characters.
Characters.
Any of whom are here tonight.
That's right.
All right.
How about compatible with the planning commission's characters?
I don't think that's a good idea.
I think I'm getting.
Speaking for myself.
Comfortable with the town, okay with folks, or or existing?
Well this kind of reminds me of a discussion we had either last time or the time before about the character of the village, which makes me way inclined to leaving character in there, but.
I, I think Bill is right, leave character in there.
I have to be once a year, Bill. And
Yeah, once a year.
Seems to me that it's largely a single family. And you know, I favor that. And there are some multi-families scattered around, some of them were, were divided before we had zoning. But I'd hate to see our character change a lot.
Yeah, we don't want any steel mills in the center of town, you know?
Well, you know Val had a policy of a steel mill in every backyard.
All right, so bringing it, bringing it back to, to businesses. Do we have a consensus on compatible with the town versus consistent with the town's character?
Go ahead, compatible with the town, that, that's nebulous enough.
Okay, well, that's good, because in the first policy, we have consistent with the town's character. But if we keep one, we change one and keep one, does that
Yeah.
annoy everybody?
It's a one-on-one sale, yeah.
A good compromise.
Okay.
They do it all the time in Washington.
Yeah. So as we, as we move through these, I'm, I'm mostly using Kevin's comments as a guide, but if you have suggestions on some of the other ones, feel free to jump in. So supporting the development of tourism-related enterprises that are appropriate to the town's character and scale. Or, I don't know if there are any tourism-related enterprises.
Yeah, we just don't want a subsidiary of Disneyland, so.
I don't think that's a problem.
I think it reads well, I, I, I don't think it's a problem, I can't read Kevin's comment. I think it reads well. I, I, I don't think it's a problem. I can't read Kevin's comment.
It says, why is this desirable? I think in reference to tourism-related enterprise, seasonally inconsistent and highly dependent of a strong economy. I think, I think as part of the balanced economic idea was that appropriate tourism was something that would be welcomed.
Well, you have the, the B and Bs scattered around town here and there. You have we like to think that tourists, at least ones passing through, will stop retail stores. And then you have some effort to attract a small conference now and then.
Right. And there are maps for sale and.
Well, I think this might be a carryover. I think it might be a carryover for the bicycle touring. Maybe I, this is, I believe this was in the earlier. We didn't add a lot of policies, did we? Did you?
Uh, I, I would have to go back and look. I don't, I mean, I think there's a lot more, maybe we have more in this one than there was in the previous economic profile, but most of it came from that.
So I, it might be related to that. It's also definitely related, I think, to the ski industry. People I know, I've met people who come and, you know, they, they come on this side of the mountain instead of the other side of the mountain when they go to Sugar Bush and Mad River as a change. You know, it's something that I just saw a note from John, the beer industry is huge, tourist industry is huge. I mean, there's nothing, I think it's a good thing. And people come down, people come down to swim in the river. I'm reading all the comments that are popping up on my.
Okay, so let's move on. It's not worth talking about anymore.
Okay.
From my point.
Important. All right, let's go.
All right. Support employers that provide wages comparable to wages paid elsewhere in Addison County and Vermont. Again, this is one of those, I think, aspirational supporting of employers, but Kevin makes a good point. How, how is that done?
We go to the one just before that about providing infrastructure.
Sure.
I understand about providing infrastructure, but it says including modern communication infrastructure. The town doesn't provide communication infrastructure, does it?
Again, it would be the, you know, if, if somebody was building high-speed internet access to the town, supporting that.
Well, they would support it, not provide it.
Right.
Right.
Okay. Well, maybe we modify the last half of that and add the word support.
Work, modern.
How about support infrastructure initiatives?
Instead of communication infrastructure, just leave it open.
Well, no, no, no. Support infrastructure initiatives for businesses, blah, blah, blah.
Okay. Make that a plural of business. I think, I think especially with more and more folks working from home and finding the limitations of that, that especially for sure, five years, that may become more and more critical.
It's also a very big issue with having to, you know, teach each kids from home if that's going to continue with remote learning and any kind of broadband. We just need to stay current with it. I think that's really the point.
All right. So if folks are good with that one, we'll, we'll move back ahead to the, the one we started on. So supporting employers that provide comparable wages.
Comment was made, living wage, which is important because a living wage means you can actually pay for housing.
It doesn't matter if it's a living wage or a comparable wage. What, how, how are we going to encourage employers to, to, to take that cost burden on?
What if we think about it, it's not so much we're encouraging employers that we are more interested in having businesses come to Bristol that support that, that provide living wages for their employees. So we want, that's different. So we want to hide, we don't want to hire. We don't want to encourage, in my mind, a dollar store versus a perhaps another business that is going to provide living wages benefits to their employees.
But I think, I think Kevin is right, right on this. I mean, how, how do we have any say so on what a company pays, pays its employees?
We don't. We just, we, I think that the town can look to encouraging certain employers coming to town that they know take care of their employees. I guess.
So it's more of an, an attract than a support.
All right. And I think John Moyers would like to make a comment.
I would. Thank you for letting me. The past town plan and used the phrase living wage. I, I think the, the sentence was something like, want to attract and keep businesses that pay a living wage or something to that effect. And Bill, with all due respect, you led the charge to strike the words living wage out of the plan, and that was successful in the past. The living wage is a defined thing and I couldn't, we could all Google it, but basically it means that it's a wage that in the, in the prevailing area, it takes into account the character of your area, what it takes to live. And, and yes, it is a little bit of jargon, but it has a definition and it means something real to people. Town is not going to pass any sort of ordinance that mandates a living wage be paid, but it does. It, it's a good thing that, that people work a forty-hour week and earn enough to make a living and pay their bills as opposed to having, have two or three jobs. And that's what a living wage is. It means you work forty hours or whatever a normal person works and you can support yourself and your family and it is aspirational. This is not a mandate. If it's in the plan, it's an aspiration, but I would urge the board to consider putting the words living wage back in the plan where they were for fifteen or twenty years. Thank you.
So would how do folks feel about attracting support, support employers that provide a living wage to employees? Just, and to take out the comparable to phrase after it.
Well, we should remember that earlier we were talking about attracting employers and employees in tourist industry. And, and quite often tourist jobs are well below the living wage.
So you're saying those are contradictory policies?
I am suggesting that, yes.
The other, the other thing is I think it's important to keep in mind that the statement comparable to wages elsewhere in Addison County. We need to also remain competitive. Matter of fact, Bristol is at an extreme disadvantage to Middlebury primarily and to a, quite a lesser degree, Virginians, but if, so within the, the realm of competition with Middlebury and Virginians, we can't lose sight of the fact that we need to be be par with them or be, be lucrative or attractive in certain ways over a business sighting in, in one of those areas where, quite honestly, the infrastructure is a lot more conducive and the amount of space that's available is a lot more conducive.
If I could jump in for a sec, the living wage is calculated for a given county in the United States, including Addison County, incorporates all of the costs and factors. It is absolutely characteristic of the community at the county level. And so the living wage here is not the same as a different, as say, some county in New York or Wyoming or whatever. It, it's different according to what the costs and, of living are in a given county. So first of all, by using the phrase living wage, you're not it's not like an abstract. It's actually something that's calculated. What does it cost? What do you need to earn an hour to pay these basic living expenses? So, and, and that's calculated by county, I believe, it may still, always used to be and may still be. And, and I've just pointed out, and I don't think anybody here is suggesting what I'm about to say, but I think using the word living wage makes sense when you consider the opposite of that. We certainly don't want to put the word out that we're happy to have folks who exploit workers to the greatest extent possible and pay as little as they can. Nobody would have a policy like that. So why don't we aim high and encourage? I mean, after all, this is, doesn't hold the force of law in the sense of it's going to make people do this. It's saying we want to attract. It's good for us if we can attract living wage or better pairs. That doesn't cost us anything to say that that's good for us and we would like that. Why not have it in the plan?
Well, there's, as, as you probably remember from our discussions in the past, John, there are some philosophical issues when you use the term living wage. And for example, as I recall, and I haven't looked it up for two or three years, I believe the living wages means a person would have a different income. Two people who have the same job would have a different income depending on the size of their family. And to most people, that doesn't make sense. It's more, there are various implications when we use that term that may not be reasonable. Another example would be there's a recent housing study that says something like the median, the a certain percentage, I think it's like thirty percent of the population can't afford the median. Well, you wouldn't expect them to. You wouldn't expect the median to afford the median rent. And there's a whole host of issues embedded in the, in the debates and discussions over living wages that make it much more complicated than you're suggesting, John. And the idea that I think is important is that we we are competitive as Kevin is suggesting with other, other places in in Addison County and even in Vermont. Because some of us believe the best way to raise wages is not through some kind of a a policy that would that would be a guideline or certainly not a regulation, but rather by increasing the strength of the economy so that as businesses grow, they, they compete for labor and have to pay a higher wage and want to pay a higher wage to get good people. A topical difference.
And I, I'll just say one thing and then leave it at that, which is everywhere that has a living wage ordinance and we're not, you're not discussing an ordinance that mandates living wages here. You're saying, we want to attract businesses that do pay. That's an aspirational statement, not a force of law thing. But there's plenty of science now. There's plenty of research. I won't call it science, but there's plenty of social science that shows or economic research that shows that places that do have, that have working, living wage policies where they do mandate living wages thrive because that throws money into the base of the economy. And as we all should know, money trickles up faster than it trickles down. And when you put money into the hands of working people, they spend it right away. And that juices the economy, which is why the, the relatively few places that do have mandated living wage policies are thriving economically relative to places that don't. So I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
And I'll simply say, there's definitely a difference of opinion as to what that research shows.
All right.
Just an approach. Instead of debating living wage, which we could do and go forth that attempt to, attempt to attract employers that play high wages, higher wages. That's, doesn't mean you don't want other businesses, but that you prefer businesses that play, that are more value-added is really what it comes to.
I don't, I don't think it, I don't think it's a bad thing to say competitive or comparable to elsewhere in Addison County because you know, you know, the other, the other aspect is, is Bristol lags as far as income is concerned to Middlebury and Virginians anyway. So in some respects, that could be aspirational or it could be something that could be lucrative, I guess you could say. So I, I think, I think we want to base, I still, I still think we the part of it that we're basing ourselves to be comparable to other areas is, is good, just to me anyway. I don't think that means that we're lowering wages in Bristol by doing that. I think it's gonna, it's gonna highlight that we want to be like the rest of the county.
It's just hard to understand how anybody would favor not paying a wage that is calcu- as a, as a calculated number, that is what somebody needs to make per hour to survive in their county and pay the basic average costs in their county. A number which is driven by the data in the county that they live in. And how, I mean, why would we want to do anything but say that we like employers who pay enough per hour so that our citizens can afford to live in the community that has these sort of known costs? What's objectionable about that? Do we want employers who will pay less or do we want to? Competitive can be a race to the bottom too. It doesn't necessarily automatically assume a race to the top. Competitive often means who can do it for less.
Okay, I'm going to as chair project and say, I, you know, I, I, I've read a lot about livable wage as well. But if the term livable wage is holding us up here, we need to get around that somehow because I agree with you, John. And, you know, I agree. And I also agree that, that there could be some debate about how that is determined. I tend to think it's a good term, but I don't want that to stall us here. So how can we get around this?
Well, how about if we pick up Jeff's term and add it to Kevin's?
I like that.
Like something.
I agree that. I think living wage is a loaded term.
So what was your term, Jeff?
Yeah.
Well, we would say have a phrase, a comma, when, when feasible, higher when feasible higher what wages, comma, in, in the sentence as Kevin described it.
So you're saying at the end of the sentence or, or
well.
That are comparable or, and when feasible higher than wages paid elsewhere?
Yes.
Why do we have to compare it to other communities? Why can't we just support employers that provide quality jobs that's, you know, support, you know, provide jobs for, I mean, I don't know, I don't have the sentence, but why is it necessary to compare it?
Because generally I think you're going to find, I'll stay incorrected, but wage salaries in Bristol are.
Well, I agree.
Which, which raises, and so by being comparable is a higher wage than we have, have today and, and then we've Which which raises, and so by being comparable is a higher wage than we have have today and and than we've had historically.
And the wages, though, is based on the actual business or industry. So it's so it's not the wage, it's actually the. It's whatever the business or industry is that we're trying to encourage. And I think we're doing that through the, you know, the promotion of the business park and and having more options. Uh, for employment. Okay. This is my thoughts.
So.
I I would note that. The plan for many, many years, perhaps even decades. From the time it was started. For at least ten years, maybe, maybe close to twenty. You know, live, living ways whatsoever, just in case. Some people are thinking that. The comment that John made was correct. I disagree with him on how he has characterized the history of the plan. As well as the way he's characterized the meaning of livable wage.
So how do, how do folks feel about the inclusion of? Additional clause. Kevin, you're back. We need to work on.
Problems tonight for some reason.
We'll have to work on our moderate communication infrastructure.
Has to be modern.
So, so I think this is what's highlighted here in yellow is the additional phrase that Bill just suggested. Is that? How do you feel, folks feel about that?
That's good.
I don't know if my English is correct there, so feel free to.
I agree with that.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep moving so we can get this done because I know it's, it's getting late and we're trying to get through these last. Sections. We're almost done. So. This last one, consider commercial building codes that would include specifications for energy efficiency and conservation. Again. Aspirational consideration.
Isn't that already part of a builder's specifications? They do have to build to certain energy efficiency ratings. They, you know, why, why? Isn't that the case?
Yes, it is. We don't have that in there.
I'm sorry?
There is, there is, um, this was probably written before that was in place. I think it was two thousand fifteen that um. That was required for new commercials.
Take that out.
Am I correct on that? Can any, and my, someone else can. That's my understanding.
Okay, so take that out rather than.
Yeah.
Change it.
Yeah.
Okay. You think we should shoot higher than ten employees?
Most restaurants have more than ten employees working in them.
I mean, Cupper's had twenty-four at their peak.
Okay.
Have to specify. We can just say large scale employer, period.
Yep. I think that's reasonable. Most folks want to. Settle, be ambitious, bring in.
Twelve point five.
Okay, so for achieving hundred percent business occupancy and adding a net minimum of one large scale employer. Some of the steps, encouraging development of business and employment opportunities, encouraging citizens and town government to purchase goods and services from local businesses.
I have a big problem.
Go ahead.
I don't want the town telling me where I should spend my money. Um, and the whole thing is very problematic. If the town needs a new tractor and it's. Ten thousand dollars in Bristol, but it's seven thousand dollars in Burlington. Are we saying the town should spend the extra money?
No.
So what are we saying? I don't know, you know.
The town is going to get the cheapest tractor.
So why are we saying it? Why are we telling Susan?
I don't know. I don't know where it came from.
Okay, so drop it.
The old one.
Yeah, I would say drop it.
Me, too.
Oh, man, I was gonna lumber from.
No, well, it should be a free choice.
Yep.
Freedom to choose.
Well, if it's free, I'm definitely going to get it there.
Oh, easy now.
All right.
Is this free lumber this week? Is that what I just heard?
Who started that rumor?
It's fading in and out. That's what I heard.
That's, okay, I'll be down tomorrow.
Oh, my.
Still standing on the stump, though. You gotta, you gotta.
Right, gotta cut it.
Pick your own kind of situation.
But if, if, as long as you're not flooded out because you're in the flood.
Right, right.
Easy now, easy.
That's right.
Okay. Uh, encouraging economic climate that retains and attracts businesses. Is that? Okay, with some of our aspirational policies. I assume we don't want to drive them out.
Sure, leave it in.
Okay. And then Kevin says, like, natural gas for public improvement projects to. Economic development. You slipped that one in.
Go for it, tell it.
Good the way that is for you.
I, I couldn't, I couldn't resist, but you know, Middlebury's got it, Virgin's has got it. And it's just another thing that puts us at a competitive economic disadvantage with attracting business.
That's for the select board to decide what the projects are.
Yeah, but I think, I think it potentially could be interpreted, you know, facilitated.
I'd love to comment on that if I could, just as somebody who's investing in, in, in that. I mean, uh. The, oh, this is public improvement projects that promote economic development. Is that what you're discussing or?
Yeah, yeah, that's sorry, the last one.
Never mind. Thank you.
Keep rolling, Andrew.
Okay, goal number three, provide favorable climate for light industry development. So this one is definitely carried over. Encouraging appropriate light industry growth and light industry, it does park. I think those are already in the works.
Don't know, they.
Thing in that matrix up there.
It looked like the last question was about encouraging future generations to continue farming in town. So if we have uh. Lost our farming advocate on the planning commission, which may not be a good sign for future generations farming in town. But I think. That is part of maintaining agricultural and forest industry. Enterprises that have historically been here. You're gonna need some future generations.
So there's all sorts of mechanisms in place, like land conservation, all that kind of stuff that makes it bearable. But. To, to this, this just like, it's almost like telling people how they need to live their lives when they grow up. I think, I think.
It may be literally something like FFA or 4H or. I don't know if that's what it's referring to or was implicating or. I mean, I assume it's not encouraging.
I have a comment to make.
Folks to have larger families.
So we are defending comments that were put in here. That have been in this plan. We were not, this, this um. Grant was not to rewrite the whole plan. And we are practically doing that, but it was to rewrite certain sections. And that's why there's no money left. But. So we've, you know, some of these things have just carried through. I don't, I don't think that, and I say we, Andrew. Andrew shouldn't, I mean, he shouldn't have to defend that comment unless you think it should be in there, Andrew. I guess.
I'm not, I'm not defending it. I like farming and food as much as the next human.
Right, so what do we want this to say? So, I mean, we should all be working on this together. You know, we've gotten into sections. We never, you know, this is something that's happened through this whole process. And we want to make this the best plan we can and. But we don't have to be defending things that were put in the plan by someone we don't even know who put that in there. So as a group, let's decide what we want to have in here. You know, I guess that's what we're doing. I'm sorry, I just. And I, I think that this was put in because. Most people in this community hope this main, we maintain some sort of agricultural, you know, industry in this community. Um, I don't know, you know, how do we do that?
That's what the first policy says, support agriculture.
All right, so then we take that one out.
Good.
Is that a compromise? I mean.
Good.
Not even a compromise. It's just, it's editing.
Yeah, I agree. We shouldn't necessarily carry things over just because they were there. We also shouldn't. Not take the opportunity to. Update, especially if this might not happen for five more, eight more years.
We should be so lucky.
Yeah. That being said, we did just make it to the end of our third section. So in terms of our plan for next time, I will send out. The goals and policies for all of the sections we've done. Uh, I think the, the easiest way, rather than send you all. A boatload of documents is probably going to be to post them on our website with a link. For the maps. And if we have time on our. At our meeting on the fourth, we can discuss any, any remaining changes and start the, the implementation discussion. Is that? Sound reasonable, folks?
I thought, I just wanted to say, I thought we were going to, that you were actually going to take a stab at. Doing implementations for each section. Based on the goals and policies that we've.
So we have the existing implementation section and I'm gonna resend that to Chris and Valerie. Because I think some of them have been done and some of them probably should be carried over and. Some of them should probably be dropped. So there is, there is an existing set and we could. Propose, it's in a different order because we've rearranged some of the sections. We need to basically make sure it aligns with our current sections, but I will send that out. Along with posting the goals and policies that we've already been through.
What do we, what did we uh? Cover up for, what did we fill in for meatballs tonight?
Uh, we, we filled in flood resistance. Uh, what was this one? Economic development?
Survival.
What was our first meatball? Housing.
Oh, yeah. Housing, floodplain and economic. That's a lot.
Am I muted? No.
Parmesan cheese and my meatball.
Congratulations, everyone.
Katie, can you send me uh? That whatever that thing was with Adam and I'll edit the past. Uh, minutes and I'll send that out with the new minutes so everybody can see it.
Okay.
I'll do that.
You're gonna send me the time timeline, right?
I will, although Katie has it too. She could also send it.
Okay, somebody send it.
One of us will send it.
Andrew, can you take us back to that compromise we raised on wages?
He can't find it.
All right, can you, can you see it here?
Yep.
By zoom in.
Okay.
Uh, we'd also. Attempting not to attract or and support. But if.
Okay.
How about if it's businesses instead of employers?
Businesses would be fine, but I want to add another word to, and when feasible.
I got that.
I'll leave it in there. Adding something after.
Oh, okay, sorry.
And when feasible, between feasible and higher, add the word aspire. For higher. For higher wage, take out the word and. Aspire for higher wages. Than paid elsewhere in Addison County. Just to show we're aspiring for ever higher elevation of goals.
It's like the Olympics of wages here. Okay, um. Uh. Okay, I'm not sure if I need to, if we need to change that sentence, if it still makes sense grammatically.
Well, it's to tell and not to spell it, Andrew.
You can't spell a word six ways, you're. Um, okay. You folks are.
You've got the idea.
Can you rewrite that one, Andrew? But you can do it later, you know?
Yes.
Later tonight?
No, tomorrow.
Okay, yeah, I will, I will keep all the same words, but. Rearrange them so it. But yes. I'll, we'll keep those changes and those, those phrases if folks are okay with aspiring. All right, so Katie, I can hand it back to you.
Okay, Bill. Bill Brown, I knew you want to say something.
Oh, I will stop sharing now.
Oh, I just, no, I'm good.
No, I don't have adjournment on there.
No.
So I guess we can't too.
Can ever adjourn?
I don't think so. Anyone want to make a motion?
Move to adjourn.
All in favor?
All right.
Bye.
Remember to send me that stuff.
I will, I got it. Okay, thank you, everybody. I think we're done for tonight.
Bye.
All right.
Thanks, everybody.
You, Andrew.
See you in a couple of weeks.
Thanks, Andrew. Good job.
Thanks, everybody for hanging in there.
Yeah, good job.